Hi, everybody. Peggy, I feel like we know someone in common.
Okay.
David Plufka.
Ah, yes, I sit next to him.
Yep, he, uh, we sat on, uh, planning and zoning in Brentwood together.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, and he's, uh, he's my neighbor. He's, uh, neighbor up the way.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's funny.
Small world. Yeah. All right. I'm gonna mute myself before I forget.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, Jeff. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Good to be aboard. On the board, oddly enough.
Be aboard on the board.
Yeah, hi Jeff. Sorry, I'm having technical difficulty, so I'm absorbed.
That's okay.
Happy birthday.
Yes, happy birthday. Tell us how it is to be 21 now.
Yeah, I'm gonna go and party it up after this.
Happy birthday, Peggy.
Thank you.
And welcome, Jeff.
Thank you.
I got a new camera. I didn't, didn't realize it had such a wide, um, I have to clean up my desk now. I didn't realize. My old camera, you would have never seen that.
Technology, ain't it wonderful?
Hasn't it grand? Gosh darn it. I turned off my monitor.
Oh.
I got it back.
Okay. I see Sam, I see Larry. See Peggy, see Lisa, see Tori, see Jeff, and I see Jean. All right, we've got everybody here. I saw Chris down there, too. I'm ready to go ahead and get started. So we'll call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Uh, so roll call. Everybody is here, including our new board member and outgoing board member. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve it as presented.
In all second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, communications. We did have a person sign up. Maria Cluthappy. Is she actually signing in to talk, or how does that work?
Sue, do you know if she's joining us tonight?
I do not know. She said there was a chance that she wouldn't make it by 6:30. So I don't, I don't know if she's gonna be here or not.
Okay. She gets here in the next minute or so, maybe we can go back, but we should probably move on, since we don't know how long it might be.
Hey.
Okay, uh, we're up to acceptance of unofficial results of the election.
I'll make a motion to accept the unofficial results until certified by the St. Louis County Board of Election Commissioners and to declare the election of Peggy Hassler, Jean Pretto, and Jeff Wolman for three-year terms to the Melville R9 Board of Education.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Welcome aboard and welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're gonna.
Where's Sam?
She's in here.
She's here.
And I'm here. Well, I'm sure gonna miss you, girl. I, you know, we started this journey together.
We did.
Um, it's seems like forever ago, but you were certainly an asset to the Melville School Board and don't ever forget that.
I appreciate it. You guys have been wonderful to work with.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I can just say as a parent and community member, that I just wanna thank you for your service. And as a board member, I wanna thank you for your guidance early on in, you know, my experience and, um, your wisdom and all of the effort you put into and heart that you put into this volunteer position. Um, we are better for it as a community and as a district. You will be greatly missed, um, and not forgotten. And just thank you so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Tori. Glad I had the opportunity to work with you and get to know you. And I mean, it's people like what you have done and Peggy has done throughout the district where you guys have volunteered your time for so many years, you know, and then to step up and do this. So it was great getting to meet you and work with you, and I look forward to watching you guys more, and I'll see you guys around.
You just did it backwards, Sam. You did the board first, and now you have how many years with your little girls? So you, you can serve again when you're my age. So I, I had to reboot my thing, so I'm sorry I missed part of this, but can I jump in and say something to Sam? Since I already did, obviously. Okay, so I wanted to thank you also, obviously. Um, you definitely bit off a bigger job, I think, than you anticipated when you were first elected. I think you had to hire three superintendents in the first, how long, year and a half, two years? Um, you always, you took on a lot of, um, issues that the community was obviously divided on, and you did a great job of always remembering that the kids were first and, uh, kept your head in the game that this was about the kids of our district and not the people that were trying to, uh, sway your opinion one way or the other, whether it be through social media or through coming to our board meetings and, uh, trying to persuade your opinion on things. Um, you went through a lot of years of a lot of, uh, issues that were pretty hot, and we've been lucky this past two years, I think, that there haven't been so many hot, hot items. Um, you, you then, well, let's back up. Then you got pregnant with your un- maybe unexpected baby, and you still ran for a second term, and good for you. You've been a huge asset to the district, and we're really, really sorry to see you go. Um, we'll definitely miss your spunk and your insight and your no-nonsense approach to everything. Um, so I'm really glad for you and your family that you're gonna have all those extra hours now to devote to your kiddos and obviously all the, um, you're gonna, now, I think you're president at Mosaic's Parent Organization, so you didn't skip a beat, obviously. But anyway, thanks again for all your dedication and service to our community. You are very, very appreciated, and as you know, you'll be on a hotline when we have questions that we, we, uh, can, that we can talk about publicly and want your insight. So thanks very much.
My turn?
Yep.
I've had the chance to, to serve with Sam for six years. Uh, she came in at a real interesting time. Uh, we'd had three years of partisan divide on the board, and she and Jean came in at the same time. But I think the important thing is that what Sam, Samantha kinda brought a very positive approach to things and, uh, helped us get, I think it made the board move beyond partisan perspectives and really to the united effort we should have, and that's the focus on students and improving the district. She was an instrumental voice in the selection of Dr. Gaines. That was probably, wasn't very long after she'd come into office. She was really instrumental in developing just the culture and the leadership and just the maturity of the board in becoming more conversational and talking to each other rather than at each other. You know, I can't thank you enough for the, for your voice and for your energy and the leadership you were willing to step up to. Now, I've worked with 22 different board members. Jeff will be 23. You're one of the best I've worked with. You understood what we were supposed to do as boards. We were supposed to govern, guide, and move people forward, and you did that. Uh, I wish you the best. I'm gonna miss you, but best wishes to you.
Does everybody else already gone?
You mind if I turn and being?
Can I go first?
Go right ahead, Lisa.
Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, you can go.
No, no, please, go ahead.
Okay, um, yeah, I spent the day, Samantha, thinking about all of the amazing things that have happened in this district under your leadership. You've been a really strong leader, very organized, and very willing to jump in there in situations that were very, um, as Peggy put it, very hot, very, um, controversial. I've actually learned a lot from you, and I really appreciate how much time you took with Tori and I when we were brand-new board members and, um, mentoring us and helping us to understand, uh, everything that goes on with these, um, with these board meetings. So I will definitely miss you. Um, I've enjoyed getting to know you, and I think you should really be very proud of the legacy that you've left, because it's pretty big. And, uh, I wish you the best.
Well, I guess we'll, I guess we'll, uh, sorry.
Her audio is out again. Is your audio out again, Sam? Yeah, it is. Sorry, Jeff, go on.
Well, if you wanna talk about a hard act to follow, I probably am gonna be looked at as someone who's gonna be following in the shoes of someone who has blazed a presence on this board unlike a lot of people and all in a positive way. I go back to three years ago when I started figuring out, hey, wait, Samantha Stormer, she's on the board, and she's actually the president of the board, and she started to make me understand about what the board does and how to govern and how to do this. And she started putting a little whisper in my ear back in the day, and first I thought she was completely crazy to make me be a position where I could actually be on this board and try and make a difference. So I have an incredibly hard act to follow. That's why I spent two years at her direction going to board meetings, so I could try and hit the ground running and fill a seat that is gonna be extremely hard to fill, but the presence on this board that is both amazing, purposeful, and unique. And I cannot say enough good things about her. She gets to actually flip this back at me, because now I have stepped out of being on the Mosaic PTO board where she's now president. She has reminded me without any semblance of hesitation how she's gonna call on me to help her out now that she's at the Mosaic PTO presidency. So I have her to thank for putting me in the position where she is a person where I'm gonna try and follow and do my best and rely on her for advice when I can, and I know she'll be doing the same back to me. So Sam, thank you very much for putting me on this direction, and I hope to live up to the amazing standard you've put for this board.
And we can't hear you. I think I know what you just said, though. Um, this is great, though, because of all the times over these past four years that I've been on the board where we've argued about all of these things. I've waited for the day when you wouldn't be able to talk back when I was talking.
No talking back.
This is kinda nice, but, um, unfortunately, I only have great things to say, and I, everyone has said so many great things that I feel the same way about. Those three years when you were our president, those were transformative years, coming right off of Prop R. We needed somebody with strong leadership, and you provided that. You took us through a really hard time to get to where we're at, and you took all the politics out of it. It wasn't about, uh, some of the things like Larry had said, these arguments between board members. You gave everybody a voice. You made sure everybody got heard. Uh, you really transformed things a lot, and it was the kind of leadership we needed. You've been helping people like me, like Jeff, um, to be better board members. That part's been great. And then, you know, this last note I had was just about arguing about absolutely almost everything else. I'm trying to remember something where we agreed right off the bat whenever a topic came up, but I always learned so much more about it by us having those discussions and different points of view. And, uh, just wanna thank you for everything you've done for this board, everything you've done with helping me on this board and everything, even just from a personal friendship side. Thank you.
Can I jump in with an official, uh, few words from the district? So on behalf of Melville School District, the administration, our employees, and students, I'd like to thank you for your six years of service on the Board of Education. Um, and thanks to our global pandemic, you even got a few bonus months in with us, um, as well. So thank you for guiding our district through your decisions related to policy and finance and governance, always with the best interest of our students and our community in mind. If we were in person, I would be presenting this plaque to you, um, but because we are not, we will get it to you as soon as possible. So thank you very much. And then I have one more. Um, one more board recognition for Kevin for completing your first year as, uh, president of the Board of Education. Um, we're grateful for your service and for your commitment to the students and families and employees of Melville School District, and normally I would be handing you this plaque, um, but I will get this to you as soon as we can in person. So thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Samantha.
Thank you. All right, appreciate it. Uh, so I'm not sure how to pronounce this next thing that we are to do.
Sinadai.
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 Sinadai. So I, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn Sinadai.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now hit the gavel. All right.
This is when we have cake.
And I wish we were in person, because I, uh, the bakery made a mistake for my birthday cake, and I have two cakes upstairs.
We'll be bye.
I, I said, oh, my gosh, of all the nights, I could have brought cake, but I will.
Rain check that for another day.
Yeah, or if you, drive-through, if you wanna, wanna piece, come on over.
Okay, well, at this time, then, we're gonna have, um, our newly-elected board members take the oath of office. So if Jean, it looks like everybody's off mute. So Jean, Peggy, Jeff, we've got the, um, the oath of directors up on the screen, um, so if you all could just recite that, um, in unison, that would be awesome.
Hold on, I gotta shrink my screen here.
Yeah, same.
Okay, whenever you guys are ready, okay, I, I'll lead us in. I do solemnly swear that I will support
the Constitution
of
United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Missouri. And that I will faithfully and impartially demean myself in office, discharge the duties of school director in and for the Melville School District R9, county of St. Louis.
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability. According according to the law.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you, again.
Thank you.
Um, and we, you will need to sign the, um, the oath of office, and we will get that to you as soon as we can, so that you can sign those.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And congratulations, Sue.
Okay, now we turn it over to Dr. Gaines for the next part.
All right, so this is, uh, the part where I get to kinda lead the meeting for a little bit through some elections. So we'll start by asking for nominations for president.
I would like to nominate Kevin Schartner for president of the Melville School Board.
All right, Kevin, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to cease nominations and declare Kevin president by acclamation.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Uh, congratulations, Kevin, on being named president again.
Thank you.
All right, so at this time, now I need to ask for nominations for vice president.
I'd like to nominate Peggy to serve as vice president.
Peggy, do you accept the nomination?
I do, thank you.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to cease nominations and declare Peggy Hassler as vice president by acclamation.
So moved.
Nice, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Congratulations, Peggy, on being elected vice president. So that's all from me. Though, Mr. President, you may take over once again.
Okay, thank you. Um, could I get nominations for secretary?
I'd like to nominate Tori Belkley for secretary.
Okay, Tori, do you accept?
I do.
Okay. Are there any further nominations? Okay, can I get a motion to cease nominations and declare Tori secretary by acclamation?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Tori. Okay, next up, could I get a motion to name Marshall Crutcher as treasurer?
I so move.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, Marshall, you're treasurer again. Okay, next up is, uh, board member committee assignments, and on the boards, there was a, uh, table, spreadsheet-type table, which said, uh, what positions everybody has for this year. So is it possible to get a motion to accept the board member committee assignments as presented?
Um, I motion to accept that.
In all second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Next up, can I have nominations for an MSBA delegate, for the MSBA delegate?
Oh, I, I'd like to nominate Lisa.
Lisa, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Can I get a motion to cease nominations and declare Lisa the MSBA delegate by acclamation?
So moved.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, congratulations. Uh, we're up to the MSBA alternate. Could I get nominations for MSBA alternate?
I would like to nominate Jean for alternate.
Okay, Jean, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any further nominations? Can I get a motion to cease nominations and declare Jean the MSBA alternate by acclamation?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Can I get nominations for the SSD Special School District Council Delegate?
I'd like to nominate Larry Felton for the SSD Council Delegate.
Larry, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any further nominations? Can I get a motion to cease nominations and declare Larry the SSD Council President by acclamation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations. Can I get nominations for the SSD Council Alternate?
I would like to nominate Lisa as the alternate.
Lisa, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Can I get a motion to cease nominations and declare Lisa the SSD Council Alternate by acclamation?
So moved.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. We're in for another year. Well, a little less than a year, but you know what I mean. Okay, uh, we are up to the tennis courts.
Can I say something really fast? I'm sorry, Mike, sorry.
You're fine.
Um, Sam just asked me, she texted and asked me to let everyone know that she'd be sending an email with what she wanted to say to everybody but couldn't say to everybody, because her volume or speaker won't work. So anyway, that's all I needed. Sorry, thank you, thank you.
That works. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, consider tennis court repairs. I would like
Consider tennis court repairs. I would like to. Need to consider tennis court repairs. This would be repairing numerous cracks throughout the courts. And also be refinishing the paint surfaces as well. And, and also I'm going with alternate bid, which is repairing the cracks that are around the fence post as well. And this, I'd like to move forward with the lowest qualified bid by McConnell and Associates. In the amount of $114,375, including contingency and professional fees.
I made a motion to approve the lowest qualified bid submitted by McConnell and Associates to the amount of $114,375, including contingency and professional fees.
I paid $144,000.
I'm sorry, is that incorrect? I have $144,000.
$114,375.
Thank you. Must be a misprint.
Okay. Did we make the motion with the 114 or the 144?
I made the motion with the 114, as Mike had explained.
So I would like to second that.
Okay. Mike, could I ask you really quickly? What is the tennis court work that's gonna be done?
This is. Cracks that are on the surface, they're going to be patched. They'll be grounded out, filled in, and then there'll be a mesh put over it and then another material and then all the courts will be painted and restripped.
Okay.
Yeah, I recently had been there and I called Mike. As a matter of fact, this was already on his radar. But I'd been called by some residents who had been there to play and said it actually was quite dangerous. So. If we're gonna have it open, we better have it safe. So. I'm glad that this is on your agenda, Mike. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, Mike. You have the next one, too?
Yes, the next one is waterproofing on Berkeley Middle School, waterproofing the exterior aggregate on the outside of the building. This is just something that needs to be. Routine done probably with about every 10 to 12 years, they say. And I think it's been a while since we've done it. But I'd like to move forward with lowest qualified bid submitted by Superior Waterproofing in the amount of $77,608. Including contingency and professional fees. And also I'd like to say that we did have a second bid, but they did not submit a bid bond. So. We were not able to accept that bid until it was a non-compete bid. So I'd like to move forward with Superior Waterproofing.
Can I just ask the question because. Not having the additional bid in there, is that about what you would expect this to be from your past experience?
Well, that's kind of the budget number we had. Was it around 65 to 70? So.
Okay. Right in this range.
Right in there, yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to say here again, this is, this is something preventative that we have to do. To keep from ending up replacing the entire thing. Because if you don't seal it, it's gonna end up coming apart, chipping apart. And you know, it's just. This $77,000 now would seem quite cheap in comparison to what it would cost us not to do it. And have to replace it later down the road.
Okay. There any other questions or comments? Okay, can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the lowest qualified bid, which was submitted by Superior Waterproofing. In the amount of $77,608, including contingency and professional fees.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Alright, thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Allo. Okay, did Maria join us by chance, Sue?
This is Jess. I don't see her on here.
Jess, okay. Alright, so patron comments, I don't believe there was any for the end here. Since Maria's not here, we'll move on. So we're up to adjourning. We get a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Alright, can we get a roll call vote from the new secretary? Oh.
No pressure, no pressure, Tori.
Not at all.
It's already, do you need that sheet?
I have your names right here, Kevin.
Knows where we live, too.
Um. Kevin.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Peggy.
Yeah.
Jeff.
Yes.
Me, yes.
Alright. That's it, we are adjourned.
Bye, everyone. Be safe, stay healthy.
You as well.
Congratulations. Have a good night.
Thanks, guys.